Well, good evening. The hour being after six forty-five, it is my high honor and privilege to call the May first, two thousand and twenty-five Wapo School Committee meeting to order our first order of business. This is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next agenda item is a public hearing on school choice for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year. Chair will entertain a motion to open the public hearing regarding school choice for school year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Denizio, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. We will, Chair will now entertain public comments on becoming a school choice district for the coming calendar year. Seeing none, Dr. Goff, do you have a recommendation?
Sure. School choice must be taken annually as the school committee can go on record as to whether or not to become a school choice district. My recommendation at this time is to vote not to become a school choice next year. We're continuing to look at class sizes, so this is fluid. And as we know, entering next year's budget season, we're making sure that we're meeting all the individual educational needs right now. So it's really not predictable. We all know what the budget's like next year. And there are a lot of factors that are determining this decision, from the availability of space or seats, and that the enrollment of the student will not have an adverse impact on the school's budget. So some people might wonder why some districts opt to vote for a school choice. Typically, there are two types of districts who take advantage of this option. So one would be either your very small, your smaller districts that are required to have school choice, just to have enough students enrolled to remain a functioning district. And others are the largest districts, like I believe Fall River and Brockton, have school choice for the funding provided for those districts. Some people think too that sometimes it has to do, you know, that you would, might do it for diversity reasons, but it's not necessarily tied to that. You tend to get people from your surrounding towns because those parents are responsible for transportation. So you'll see that districts like ours do not do school choice. And I've outlined my reasons. So it's also capped, I believe, at five thousand dollars per student. So that's my recommendation.
Further comments from the public? Seeing none, comments from the school committee. Mrs. Gallivan.
I would agree that, first of all, now's not the time with the budget uncertainties. And I think that the intention around school choice is different from the reality of it. So I would be in favor of not being a school choice district.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Gallivan, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Having taken an opportunity for public comment, we will now have a motion with someone like to make a motion relative to our school choice status for school year twenty-five, twenty-six. Motion to not become a school choice district for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Mrs. Gallivan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you very much. Next order of business is our Wapo High School weekly student report. We have Victoria Beastie here.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Beastie, and I'm a junior at Wapo High School. With the fourth term off to a great start, students are fresh off a spring break and beginning to study for their finals and AP exams. As seniors finalize their future plans, many are applying for different scholarships in their fields of interest, along with juniors who are starting their future exploration and underclassmen finalizing next year's schedules. Spring sports are off to a great start with boys tennis, boys and girls lacrosse, and boys, girls, and unified tracks, track, all having impressive performances in their most recent games and meets. So far, all of our teams are doing great and have great records. The WHS Film Festival is being held tonight in the auditorium. This year, there is only one showing happening. Best Buddies had a special meeting this Tuesday with Best Buddies representatives from Massachusetts and Rhode Island because our chapter was the highest fundraiser for the Friendship Walk happening on May seventeenth. The Community Service Club celebrated Earth Day by having a cleanup to help keep our school and environment healthy. Robotics placed second place in their division finals and qualified for the World Championship in Houston, Texas at their last meet. They also won the prestigious Auto Anonymous Award as well and got a Silver Finals Award. Since then, they have competed in the World Championship and placed second, which is so impressive. Many juniors and seniors plan to attend the WHS Prom tomorrow night at six. The prom committee has been working hard to plan a great night with great music for everyone who attends. Students are expected to stay for at least four periods and stay at prom until nine thirty, which shouldn't be too hard because I'm sure it'll be great. Overall, the last few weeks at WHS have been great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your report. Questions or comments to the committee? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thanks, Victoria.
Moving on to our next order of business, we have a request for a field trip to Rwanda. Here with us, we have Sue Wick and Lindsay Reichelt. Would you guys like to come on down from the audience?
Hello. We are here tonight to request to take a group of students to Rwanda over February eight through two thousand and twenty-six for a service learning tour. This may sound a little familiar because we were going to go this year, but obviously they had a Marburg situation, and so the tour got canceled and all of the travelers got a hundred percent refunds. Now, the Marburg is a hundred percent under control. In fact, they did a really good job containing it and got it under control quite quickly. So the State Department has Rwanda back at level two, which is the same level as countries like the United Kingdom, Germany, Spain, Portugal, et cetera. The price of the trip is a ten-day trip, and the price is six thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which is obviously inclusive of travel, accommodation, food, and various attractions and sightseeing tours. It also includes a global travel schedule. The only thing that would be in addition to this would be some tip money, and a formula is used to calculate that, which I would imagine would be somewhere around about a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars. On this trip, we would fly into the capital, Kigali, where we would get to do some sightseeing. Notably, we'd get to go to the Kigali Genocide Memorial, which I think would be a very powerful learning experience. Then we would travel to Jiparit, which is a more remote village where our service learning aspect would be undertaken, and it would be ten to twelve hours of service learning. The way they usually do it is they usually have you do like a morning or an afternoon of service learning, and then the other portion of the day, you're immersed in cultural activities at that location. And then the final part of the trip would take us to Akadira National Park, which is on the border of Tanzania, where the students would get to experience three different types of safari, a very, a nocturnal one, a boat cruise, and a regular jeep type of safari. So that is what the trip entails. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Ms. Denizio.
I cannot imagine a trip that encompasses more of the type of learning that we're looking for our students to do. And as always, if you need extra chaperones, many of us are willing to volunteer. I will make a motion to approve the out-of-state, out-of-country, out-of-continent, out-of-hemisphere field trip to Rwanda in February two thousand and twenty-six.
Second. Motion by Ms. Denizio, second by Mr. Breen, Mrs. Gallivan.
I just want to thank you guys. You're amazing for how many trips you're willing to take on. I think it's fantastic, and we're lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is a wellness curriculum update from Health and PE. We have Coach Wall here.
Thank you very much. All right. Hey, thanks for having me. So yeah, I'll be touching on our yearly health and wellness update. It's been a good year so far, hopefully to finish in the right way. I'll just hit you with our goals and stuff, like I always do to start. You know, we take pride in creating an environment of, you know, fun and movement while developing like skills and social awareness and physical awareness. We're continuing to work on developing fine motor skills, especially at the younger level, and then accompanying into gross motor skills as they develop coordination and move on into like their bodies, grow into their bodies. Introduce new activities, hopefully give kids something that they can latch on to, something they enjoy. Develop in students with an understanding of how to take direction, work during unstructured time, work with groups, work with other people, other students that typically would not be working with. And, you know, we like to try to always stay current with current activities, games, activities, lessons, things of that nature. So basically, in a grand scheme of things, what we try to do is really take pride in our class being an enjoyable outlet for students while learning something productive in the world of physical education or health. I think it's an awesome situation where we take a lot of pride in putting kids in groups where they might not normally be comfortable, developing that comfort level, developing that self-confidence, developing a potential friendship, while giving them experience of a million different activities. You know, with the goal is hopefully maybe something piques their interest and you take it outside of school. But I firmly believe that starting activity at a young age, kind of harboring that, giving them opportunities to grow, they've given them opportunities to realize that physical activity is not just stuck to traditional team sports that you might play outside of school. It's not stuck to just diet. It's everything, it's all encompassing. And the younger we get to them, the more likelihood is that they'll carry through the rest of their life because, you know, it's one of those things that it really shouldn't stop after twelfth grade, right? You know, physical activity, health, wellness, overall well-being is something that we need every day of our life, for the rest of our life. So, you know, as a district, we try to make sure from K through twelve, they're getting that experience, and hopefully it, you know, carries on past Wapo High. I'll start with the numbers and the boring stuff for you, then we'll get to the fun stuff, the pictures and stuff later on, okay? So this year has been interesting in the sense that, working with Bill and working with our teachers, we started, or we did our curriculum review cycle. It was a unique situation in the sense that, as we all know, we just got the new standards given to us a couple of years ago. So it turned out to be the perfect time to not only do like an internal review of our curriculum, but also kind of hand-in-hand work with the new state standards after giving schools a year, year and a half to kind of get a grasp of them. So the way we did is, you know, I essentially just took them all and just broke them down from K through two, three through five, middle school, and then high school level. And there's a million standards, and they're super wordy, somewhat redundant in terms of the way they do things, but I thought it was important to go through kind of a fine-toothed comb. So basically, what you're looking at in that middle bracket is, for the elementary school, meaning K through five, even though the standards were broken up, K through two and then three through five, I kept them all K through fives for this particular thing, there was a hundred and sixty-two bullet points, meaning standard, substandard, something that they asked you to hit. It's a lot, right? As we went through it, we found out that we're hitting at about seventy percent already with what we do. Same thing in the middle school, there's a hundred and thirty-one bullet points that they'd ask you to hit on. We're hitting at about seventy-eight percent already prior to any changes that we're going to make. The high school, we're hitting at about sixty-four percent, okay? So a couple of things about that, it was eye-opening to kind of really dig deep into kind of self-reflection and do a self-scout, to use some coaching terminology, of how we do things and how we do things better. It was also really cool at the end of it to realize that we are doing a good job. I've told you guys for years that I'm very confident in the staff, and that I feel like they do a good job, and this was just kind of, it was nice to see some hard data that said, yeah, you know, we are doing the right thing. Is there room for growth? Of course. But in the moment, you know, it was nice to know that with these new standards, we don't need to stop from scratch. We're already ahead of the curve from, you know, speaking for ourselves, ahead of the curve when I assume some districts probably feel they are. I do want to make a note that inside these standards, they are very health-heavy. And what I mean by that is they talk about nutrition laws, they talk about social media, they talk about hygiene, personal safety, community engagement. So it kind of got all encompassed into the phys ed, health world, you know, the consumer science aspect of what they used to be called twenty years ago. All that stuff got really engulfed into these new standards. So the way we've been doing it, and again, working hand-in-hand with Bill, because he's been working with our guidance department, and their grouping down at the lower levels, meaning the elementary school, they cover a handful of these topics that maybe we weren't covering in PE. So it is a little bit of a collaborative group effort, but it's going to work out nicely in the sense that, you know, we just flat-out don't have enough time for our elementary schools to potentially cover, you know, all the things of hygiene and all the things of substance abuse and misuse and stuff like that, without really sacrificing the activity time. But through the nurses, through the guidance department, through the counselors, the elementary is still getting a good portion of that coverage through them. It'll just continue to grow as we figure out, all right, you take this, we take this, and we'll go from there. You know, and on the sides there, I labeled a few areas where there's potential growth and what that is. I left those standards in, those are the ones that I felt like we didn't hit to the point that we could hit them or will like to hit them down the road. Not necessarily something we did wrong, just maybe a blind spot or something that we, again, sometimes is a time constraint. So as you can see, in the K through two, they're pretty much a similar thing, the physical health and hygiene, personal safety, misuse and use of substances. At the middle school level, again, personal safety, gender, sexual orientation, public community and health. At the high school level, nutrition, balanced eating, public communication, environmental health, right? So our plan going forward, meaning starting in September of the school year next year, is I'd like to start eliminating these bullet points where I feel like we could do a little bit better job. So what we've done as a group at each level is we've targeted a couple things, and we're going to add lessons into what we already do, somehow figure a way to fit them in to start covering that. So like at the elementary level, we will be doing some type of nutrition and balanced diet lesson incorporated into the PE world, okay? All four schools will be doing it. It'll be the same lesson from all four teachers, it'll be a collaborative effort. We've already got the template, kind of what we want to do, we just got to kind of finalize it and find out exactly where we want to put it in, whether that be early in the year, middle of the year. At the middle school level, we've been looking at, you know, for the personal safety aspect, a lot of times, stuff like that is a good time to get a public speaker in, or a school resource officer, or someone like that. And I know they do new speakers here, but our middle school staff started reaching out to some organizations and people that could potentially come in and be a school-wide thing, and that would help cover it. And the same thing with the high school level, balanced nutrition, eating, balanced diet, that seems to be the one we've kind of missed on a little bit. But again, that's one of those things that I think it's an easy enough fix to make sure we get that in there. And that's always something we want to help try to incorporate anyway when we talk about overall health of our high school students. So it's just one of those things that, okay, now we know where we need to do stuff, so we're going to target these things. We're not going to be able to get to all of them next year, but the goal is, you know, kind of a tiered approach. We're going to target a few of them, make sure we get them in next year, see how it goes. If it goes great, we keep them with them, and then we can go find another bullet point that we feel like we can kind of target and go get. And again, it kind of goes to our overall theory or our overall approach, is that like we're not afraid to change, and we're not afraid to say, nah, that didn't work, we got to do something differently. So this is just a different way of looking at that in the sense of, okay, we've got a couple of things that we want to improve on, how do we improve them? Let's do it. If we feel like we did it at a good level, let's stick with it and go find something else. It's one of those things, just don't stay status quo. Don't ever be stagnant. And because in our world, things change constantly. So it's been a long process. It started in September. The staff, K through twelve has done an awesome job. We've got spreadsheets and data sheets all over the place that get confusing for me to look at occasionally, but I've tried to narrow it down as simple as possible so you guys can understand, and I'm sure I did do a wonderful job explaining the in-depth of it all. But just so, you know, we went through these things with a fine-toothed comb, open eyes, no one had any pride about it. We didn't, it was never a, hey, you're doing something wrong. It was always a, hey, what can we do better? And that's the approach they took, and we've come to some pretty good consensus. And now, over the next two months left of school, we've really got to just hammer down, okay, how are we going to approach this in September? And we're on the right path to do that. You know, so that's what we stand in the district, the whole curriculum review cycle. So like I said, we're in a good spot. I'm excited about the potential changes or potential additions, I should say. Changes is probably the wrong word, potential additions to what we're going to do, and the idea that we're going to hit next year, hitting more targets in those new standards than we were this year. I think that should be the goal no matter what. And I'll just kind of briefly go through the school systems, you know, elementary school, you know, again, you're dealing with, there's a huge difference between a kindergarten and a fifth grader. So a lot of things in the elementary school have to be modified, changed, to get to the actual end goal. So we try to modify things, we try to introduce team sports, team activities through modifications, different skill-based activities. We really try to hammer home, you know, balance and throwing, hopping, the fundamental movements that every child should be getting, skipping, jumping. I know it sounds real simple, but if you think about almost every type of physical activity, the basis of it is some type of walk into a skip into a hop or some type of balanced coordination. So it's super important at a young age that they are drilling those things home and getting comfortable doing those things as they continue to grow into their body. Again, the unstructured time, I don't want you to think that that's recess. What I mean is the unstructured time in PE is essentially, here's the instruction, here's what we're doing, let's do it. And then there is a little bit of freedom. And so like students need to understand, when you're given the instruction, here's the opportunity for you to do it, learn to do it correctly so that it's not a constant stop and change and readdressing a situation. Those behaviors are learned behaviors. The earlier we get them, the better things are for students as they go down the road. I thought it was important to note that OPR, for a couple of years in a row, has now been awarded the American Heart Association Grant again. So that's just basically commitment and proving that you're committed to the sixty minutes of play for students. It's a thousand-dollar grant that they've gotten a couple of times. Coming up on the elementary school's favorite day of the year, which is their school-based field days, and then we're going to carry over our second straight, fifth grade, all-district field day up at the field of one A. This year, we've changed the format slightly, we've added a couple of things, and we're actually having a group of high school peer leaders come and help orchestrate that as well, which is, we're pretty excited to have happen this year. And I'll, these are the pictures. I think if you just look at the picture, I'll give you a second look at them. You can see that modifications left and right, you can see skill-based stuff, you can see group play, you can see individual play. It just, I just thought it was a good idea to show you the differences in the way kids do things, the way we set things up, the use of space that they do a good job with. I believe in one of them, it might be the next slide, or is it this one? There's balloons, I think, working on coordination, so finding different levels to allow kids to have success. Most of those are at Elm. As you can see, they use the, they use technology really well. He uses the television screen to get across some of his teaching, and then they move forward. And then this one is the one, I believe, it's tough for me to see, the hula hoops on the hoop, which is a modification that we use for the younger kids because you can't have success if you can't reach your target, you can't reach your target if it's ten feet in the air, so let's drop it down to six, and then you can start to develop some success. And as you get older, we move it forward. Couple more, group play, all the fun stuff the kids like to do, balances, coordination, scooter play, stuff of that nature. So as you can see, you know, the kids, these aren't staged, these kids have fun when they're with us. And they do a very good job of just changing it up and making sure kids are getting as many opportunities as possible. I grouped high school and middle school together just because it's a little bit easier. The goals in the same vein are the same, but they change with the size, the skill, the development, the education, the everything, that we change with our student body, right? So we want to improve physical fitness, continue to improve motor development, introduce new activities that they can handle, which what I mean by that is a modification of pickleball from the elementary school that you're using a balloon or a foam ball and no net, and instead of just a cone. Okay, now we get to middle school, you're a little bit older, a little more coordinated, now we move on to the paddles and the pickleball and the net. And then you teach the rules and you show the core and stuff. So as you grow and get older, you can learn how to do things correctly, but the idea is that the elementary school, you've got the basis to have success when you get to the elementary school. Again, we're huge on the respect of not only yourself, the people around you, PE and health can be uncomfortable for kids, we're well aware. We hammer home that this is a safe spot, there's no judgment, you're going to work with people that you don't typically work with, you're going to do something really well, you're going to do something not great, everyone's going to feel the same way. It's all about trying your best and moving on, being respectful to not only your peers, to your teacher, but also to yourself. This is our seventh graders utilizing up there the new weight room that we've been using with our Health and PE classes. Seventh graders learning how to use the weight room machines, the medicine balls, things of that nature. So now that we have this facility, we have implemented strength training into stuff that we do, which is awesome. We've got it, let's use it. Kids like it, it's enjoyable. This is, again, I believe this is eighth graders, learning the proper lifting technique and then having some fun through movement. The picture on the left, as you're looking at it, I can't play the video, I'm sorry, but the picture, yeah, I can't play it. The video is, it's a picture, it's a video of Tiff's class using the smart board with like a yoga Pilates-type movement thing, and the whole class is doing the music going in the background. And I know, oh, no, I forgot. Oh, there we go. I know last year, I drilled you over the head about our lack of space and how we're excited to have space. I wanted to point out that this picture right here, all four of those activities are going on in the same gym. So the new space is being put to good use, it's bigger, we can do multiple things. We have four different activities going on in one class at the same time, which again kind of feeds into the way we want to do things at high school, give them some options, give them some choices, introduce them to things, let them kind of pick their own battle and then go from there. The next one is, that is our eighth-grade turkey trot. The last couple of years, we've been bringing them up to the high school. The Physites and Connor Cashman kind of spearheads it, so we bring the eighth graders up, we get the track team and cross-country kids to help out, and instead of doing the traditional turkey trot here, they bring it up to the high school, they do an eighth-grade turkey trot, and then they have some blast with it, and then underneath is ping pong set up in the gym as well. These are some high school pictures. We like to celebrate class champions when we do tournaments, and I make them take a picture with a funny championship belt, kind of a big wrestling guy, so it works. We also, I don't know if you can see it, we also got them little goofy plastic medals that they wear around school when they get them. So if you win a team event or if you win the badminton championship, you know, it's funny to see the high school kids, you go into the cafeteria, and there's six of them with little plastic medals around their neck. Silly, sure, but the kids seem to enjoy it. We're kind of always trying to just peak the interest level, and that stuff's definitely helped. Moving forward, actually, I want to go back. I do want to touch on eighth-grade wellness, which is something that we've been putting a lot of work into and a lot of thought into before we get to the end game. So as you know, we changed the way we were doing eighth-grade PE and health, we combined them all into one class we called Wellness, and that has a combination of health and physical activity together, trying to find the best way to blend it so that they're getting a touch of everything. It started off smooth, very smooth, when we had time to go outside because the classes are big, it's big A three classes. Rough patch isn't the right word because it's still been an excellent class, and they're getting a ton of information. But what we found is that when we got into the winter months and we were more contained, it got a little trickier to really kind of blend it the way we felt comfortable, we felt like we could do it better. So what we've done over the last couple of months is kind of not scrapped it, just altered it, so that the material will be the same going into next fall, but the way it's going to be structured will be a little bit different, which, again, I think I'm only bringing that up because I think it's important to note, like, the fact that the teachers here and across the district have no problem collaborating, have no problem saying, that worked, but it can be better, and then they do it. They don't just talk about it, we do it, we implement it. So we've spent a lot of time, we've had a bunch of meetings, lots of ideas thrown out, to kind of just find the best way to make this thing work. And being here has presented tons of great opportunities, but it's a challenge too. Everything's brand-new. The way, honestly, the way you come in and out of the building for a PE teacher is a challenge. This is new here, getting the kids down here. It's so just the little things that you don't necessarily count for, so we've worked through those, and then the structure of how we're going to run things, class size, things of that nature, has been smoother than I honestly anticipated, to be honest with you, but the staff here feels like we can do it better, so I've given them the freedom and the go-ahead to say, let's do it better then. And they've really put the work into it, and so it's one of those things that, going into the year, I was hopeful that it was going to work, but the A three wellness class is working. It's working well. It's accomplishing what we wanted to accomplish, and I just feel like it's going to continue to get better as we really kind of hone this thing in. Going forward, like I said, there's things that we want to target to get better on, so that's our first goal, is based off the information we've gathered from our curriculum review. curriculum review, we wanna hammer home something that, that, that we need to make better in the way we, we look at it, um, you know? And then, you know, we wanna, again, going back to the, I, I guess, I know I beat you guys over the head over the last couple of years of outside, well, now we're getting the new gym at the high school, and so it's like the last couple of weeks, the last couple, uh, department meetings at the high school has been, alright, so how are we gonna make use of it? What are we gonna do differently now that we have a little bit more room, a little bit more space, and the potential for more opportunities? So, we're already kinda structuring with the hope that, you know, into the winter of next year, whenever that gym gets opened up, alright, so now if we only offered two options in the past, how do we incorporate a third? How do we make use of the space? How do we make this more enjoyable for the students? So, it's one of those things that I, I, I liken it to what happened here. It's, it's exciting, um, you think you know what you're gonna get, we're not positive exactly what it's gonna look like, but I can promise you that we'll make the most out of it, and, and as much as this program at the middle school level has, has kinda grown and, and really got better over the last year into the new building, I, I firmly believe the addition of the new gym at the high school is gonna just allow us to expand things even more, so it's just gonna give us more options. In our world, options is a good thing. Um, so, I just wanna reiterate before we go that after this year specifically, having the time to sit down a lot of times and, and talk with the teachers and, and really look into what we're doing, I feel as strongly as ever that, like, we have a really good staff. We have a staff of people that, you know, have been doing it for a long time, but aren't afraid of change, have been doing it for a long time, but aren't afraid of collaborating, and it's a group of people that, you know, when asked to do something, they knocked it out of the park, and now we're looking forward to what the future holds, what the information we've gathered. So, it, it's exciting times, um, I don't think, I think the drastic changes are over, but in a good way, I think, I think the minor changes are what's gonna make this thing really, really go. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Now, questions?
Questions or comments, Mr. Wall? Mrs. Gallivan?
First of all, I, I love all the pictures. I think you're, put all your contemporaries out of, uh, oh, surpassed them by the number of pictures, but it, it helps to see it in action. I really think that that's important, and you did a great job of summarizing. I, I think that what we've been hoping for is a good combination of health, physical education, wellness, all coming together, and I, you know, you've said it in different ways, but I think what we want kids to be able to do is be, feel comfortable in their bodies and, and feel that they, um, are capable, because you build up the skills over time. And I, I think that's just a really important part of a child's education, so, great job, and thanks for coming here tonight.
Bye.
Mrs. Denizio?
Um, thank you also for sharing when things haven't gone a hundred percent according to plan and, and the adjustments that you made as a result, because we know, like, when you work in a school, never mind a new building, you know, working with hundreds of kids and, and as many people as we do, things are not always gonna go according to plan, and I think it's important to, um, acknowledge that. I think we benefit from hearing when there's unforeseen difficulties, and also, like, how staff adjusts, as well as their willingness to adjust and change their plans, um, and move forward, um, in a more effective way. So, thank you for just highlighting that and illustrating that for us. I think it's a testament to the commitment of your staff and your department, um, to, um, engage with whatever reality you have and try to make it better.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? We really appreciate, you know, your love for your subject matter, and one thing I'll pick out was, I was very happy to see that, as you did that deep dive into, into the standards, to see that we were doing pretty well, um, without that close look, so that we were kind of in the ballpark to start with, and, and there was an ability for you to work collaboratively with some of the departments that overlapped with USC, um, to kind of i- improve and really capture all the things we're doing, and I think, much like many of your colleagues, will come in here and say, "Well, it's, we've, we've come a long way from kickball, we've come a long way from what phys ed looked like, and, and health and wellness looked like thirty years ago," so, I mean, thank you for continuing to lead the growth of this department within the school department, over the last, uh, few times. I think you're, is this the last, um, one? The last?
Yes. In terms of curriculum presentations, yes.
Very good.
No, I appreciate that. It's like I, you know, I said it before, it's, it's a good group of people. It is. It is, so, I'm lucky in that sense.
So, hopefully, year, year from now, two, year and a half from now, we'll be hearing about how well you're utilizing the field house space.
I might be the most excited guy in the room.
I think so.
You might be one of the luckiest, in terms of your spaces.
That as well.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, yes.
Thanks.
Very good. Moving on, uh, down through our new business, we have the designation of the superintendent to serve as a voting member of the Bye County Collaborative, Byco, as, you know, Walpole is part of two collaboratives, which are groups of districts that work together for joint purchasing and for services, uh, and other, um, ways of delivering educational services in a efficient manner. Generally, the Byco Board of Directors i- is made up of superintendents. Dr. Goff has been on for a number of years. I'd point out that, um, in this case, and as, well, in the case for tech, we've been able to have an increasingly large footprint of these collaboratives within, uh, Walpole in the last year, so especially there, get a nice footprint at, uh, Johnson, so it's going well.
And the commute isn't bad either.
Commute isn't bad across town.
Right there.
Uh, we have a recommendation from Dr. Goff to appoint Dr. Goff to serve as representative on Byco for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Denizio?
I will thank Dr. Goff for her service on the board of Byco, and I will make a motion to designate her, um, as our, um, voting member for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Denizio, second by Mr. Breen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Uh, likewise, we have the tech, uh, co- collaborative, uh, which is, uh, had Mrs. Gallivan as Walpole's representative for many years, as she serves as the Board of Directors Chairman. Uh, again, we, we've been very lucky to have tech get a larger, uh, footprint at Johnson as well as in East Walpole. For our Walpole kids, they are not going far in, in this collaborative setting. Uh, you have a recommendation for Mrs. Gallivan to continue in that role, if you would like an extra meeting a month?
No, I enjoy it very much, I really do. Um, I would invite people to attend meetings just out of curiosity, if you're interested, but, um, I would be interested in continuing.
Excellent. Mrs. Denizio?
I will also thank Mrs. Gallivan for her dedicated service on the tech board of directors and vote to reappoint her for the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Denizio, second by Mr. Breen. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you very much. Moving on, uh, a wonderful thing we have to approve this evening is the ratification of the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eighth, uh, contract between the Walpole School Committee and the Walpole Teachers, uh, Association. Uh, the collective bargaining agreement, uh, is for September first, twenty-twenty-five to August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. I can't believe we've already gone through a whole additional, I feel like we were just negotiating the last one, but, uh, we had the great opportunity, myself, Mrs. Gallivan, Ms. Gaotits, Dr. Goff, Dr. Han, uh, and Assistant Superintendent Frischa, to be on Walpole's side of the table for really productive, respectful few months of negotiating. I, it, I think the, the dialogue we had was, is the textbook for how to do it right, uh, between, you know, management and labor, and I think we, we had great conversations, and we have a contract here for us that the teachers' union has ratified, that is, I think, fair and a, and a good deal for the schoolchildren and the taxpayers of Walpole. So, uh, with that, Mrs. Gallivan, you wanna?
Yeah, just a few things. To sort of summarize, um, the cost of living that we agreed to is two-point-five, two-point-five, and three percent with an adjustment to the top step s- of the salary scale. Um, we talked a lot about time off for employees, and we made some adjustments to maternity leave, adoption leave, um, paternity leave, and even temporary leave of absences. Um, we made, um, some adjustments to our ESP, um, contract, and we carved out, um, extra pay for those that work in the VIP program. Um, we had a minor adjustment to how some evaluations get done in the district. Um, we standardized their request for time off, um, across all people in the bargaining units. Um, and I think most importantly, what Bill was just saying, we had some very important conversations, because some topics are not necessarily contractual, yet they need collaboration in order to, to be worked through, and I think we had some really important discussions that are not necessarily, um, encapsulated by the contract, but that time was well spent. Um, I was looking at, um, my dad had a stamp collection, so I was looking at it the other day, and there was a stamp that was, like, celebrating collective bargaining, and, you know, of course, when you make a stamp, you talk about why it's a good thing, but it was interesting to me to see, um, to see how c- a good collective bargaining process is something to value, and I really, really think that we have one here. The quote that they had in this documentation was, "If only opposing nations would apply the principles of collective bargaining to settle their differences, there would be fewer wars." And, um, you know, I think it's important. I think that we've worked hard, but, um, our union has worked equally hard to, um, to come to the table in a productive way and still argue fiercely for the things that they felt strongly about. So, yeah, happy to, to bring it to the rest of the group tonight.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from other members of the committee? Mr. Breen?
Motion to, uh, ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Walpole Teachers Union and the School Committee for the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-eight school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Ms. Denizio. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, unanimous, five zero zero. Moving on, Superintendent, support Dr. Goff?
Just a few things. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so Dr. Han, uh, Mr. Frischa and I really extend our gratitude for the incredible work of our educators, who've really dedicated their lives to helping students learn and grow, so we thank them for their commitment, um, to not only our students, but the families as well. Um, today was, um, Principal Appreciation Day, sort of appreciation days this month. Tomorrow's School Lunchero Day, I need to get down here tomorrow, and then, um, School Nurses Day is, is next Wednesday. Um, school bus registration for, for next year is open, so we'll get that on the, the district website and get all that information out and all of the links. Um, just a reminder again, um, that the week of May twelfth, families will receive a school climate survey, and the students will be, um, will be taking the survey next week. Um, I also came across my desk, and, and I've asked the principals, uh, tomorrow to put it in their e-notes, that the U.S. Attorney's Office, uh, will be hosting a virtual internet safety presentation, keeping kids safe and secure online, a Project Safe Childhood presentation for parents, and that's Wednesday, June fourth, from six-thirty to seven-thirty, and what's nice is it's virtual. So, um, there's a log-on, um, there's a Q and A session after that, um, so, um, we'll get that out for, for families or parents who might be, um, interest, interested. Um, the Leadership Council, we're looking at many end of, end of the year events, we're really busy with transition activities, um, course selections, um, as you know, there are a lot of, uh, high school senior events, um, you've received the list at our last meeting. This month, we've got math, STE, science, technology, engineering, and the civics for eighth grade, MCAS this month. Next week, we've got the district art show at the library from six to eight, um, and, um, I'll be selecting the new artwork. I, I just wanna thank the students from, um, that are at my office this year, Peyton Doherty, Dakota Evans, Cassie Litz, Jacob McLean, Logan Murphy, Abby Simpson, Adriana Torres, and Ashley Cruz Velasquez, and they'll be receiving all of their artwork backframed, so we'll, we'll get a new one. So, Jen, you're, you're, you're up this year with me. Um, and also, that same evening is the, a speech and debate awards at, at seven o'clock, so that'll be a busy night. Um, next Friday is the Tri-Am Spring Coffee House at the high school at seven o'clock, that's a great take, and then we've got Walpole Day, um, I believe that's Saturday, the tenth. And then, don't forget, um, on, uh, Monday, this coming Monday, we have, uh, Springtown Meeting. Um, there's something practically every afternoon or evening between now and the last day of school, so it'll be a busy last, um, six weeks. Um, well, also, coming up, hoping to get the robotics team in, um, that was a fantastic placing, I mean, I'm really, really proud of them. Um, we have the peer leaders, they were supposed to come tonight, but some of them are in the film festival, and they're all in a, a ton of activities. I'm gonna try to, again, get my superintendent cabinet, hopefully, the ne- next time, and next, I believe it's next, we're gonna recognize our senior, um, school committee rep, um, next time, so, um, they're just in a lot of activities. And finally, um, we'd like to congratulate the following educators who will be honored next month at the Norfolk County Teachers Association Annual Awards Banquet. Rookie of the Year, Christine Udall, fifth grade teacher at Old Post Road. Honor Award to Erica Curran, grade-three teacher at Old Post Road, and the Service Award to Marie Doherty, long-term sub at Walpole High. And if that name is familiar, yes, that is the Marie Doherty who retired but is back helping us in doing a fantastic job, so we congratulate those three individuals.
Questions or comments for Dr. Goff? Seeing none. Moving on, over to old business, budget update. Assistant Superintendent Frischa?
Um, so, a lot has happened since you last voted. You're on the home stretch now, fortunately for this, uh, coming to the end of this fiscal year and the beginning of the next. So, with that in mind, the budget that you voted for, uh, school committee was back in January, and I was just gonna recap a few things here about what has changed since then. So, the current school committee budget of fifty-nine million, two-hundred-sixty-eight-thousand, eight forty-five represents a five-point-seven-five percent increase, and it's, um, is based on our conversations prior to these following things happening. Settlement of the WTA contract, recently revised state aid projections, town administrators' revision to the recommended budget, including additional six-hundred-and-fifty thousand to be appropriated at the twenty-five fall town meeting as recurring revenue to the school department budget, and additional four-hundred-and-sixteen thousand received for extraordinary relief today. So, we were not counting on that, we were not optimistic about how high that would come in, but we were very, uh, surprised and pleased with that number today. So, an additional four-hundred-and-sixteen thousand dollars to help us cover the deficit that we have this year of approximately one-point-six million. Um, and that will allow us a potential to replenish some of the circuit breaker carryover funds that we expended this year to help cover that deficit. So, we're heading in a good direction with some of the revenue adjustments, um, and then the school department's reduction to the personnel budget of six-hundred-and-fifty thousand is in play as well. So, all things heading to a more positive budget outlook for the end of this year and next year as well. So, given the recent improvements to our overall school budget projection for FY twenty-six, I would recommend that the school committee revise their budget to agree with the town administrator's budget of fifty-seven million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, which represents a three-point-four-one percent increase, and eventually, once the additional six-hundred-and-fifty thousand is added, would be a four-point-six percent increase, uh, to the school department's budget, which is in keeping with what we've gone up as a percent dollar amount over the past three to four years. That's generally the range we're in. Uh, these recent changes have allowed the school department to close the remaining gap with the town administrator for FY twenty-six, and will allow some carryover circuit breaker funding to be utilized in FY twenty-six. And this is not something unusual. We do this every year, sometimes it's right before town meeting, or sometimes it's at this meeting when we revise the budget to match the town administrator's recommended budget.
Very good. Questions or comments for Mr. Frischa? Just, uh, the smallest part first. What were we projecting? Extraordinary relief to be was, it's very small, like, under fifty K?
Yeah. Initially? Yeah, I, the original pool is five million, and then the pool for circuit breaker, in a general sense, went up to fifty-eight million, or they added additional fifty-eight, so I think it's fifty-eight plus the five. And then, somehow, that money benefited us in a way that we didn't anticipate would be the case, and we thought it was gonna be earmarked towards specialized transportation reimbursement, trying to meet the, um, Student Opportunity Act, seventy-five percent reimbursement they were targeting, but I think it got broadened out, and it benefited a lot of districts prior to getting that transportation-related funding. transportation-related funding.
Excellent. Other questions or comments on our revised budget number? Mrs. Gallivan?
I just think it shows an awful lot of hard work, and I think the level of detail that you put in, in your office, everybody on the top floor of Town Hall does, but just want to thank you for staying on top of the details. I mean, it's something that I think we shouldn't take for granted. You hear about great districts that are on rocky roads because of some financial problems that they're hitting. And you've brought them up in a way that I think has allowed us to be in pretty good shape right now, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess I would make a motion if I'm not overstepping. Is that what you were going to do?
Yep.
Okay. A motion to approve a budget for the FY26 school year of $57,955,945. Did I get that right?
Yes. Motion by Mrs. Gallivan, second by Mr. Breen. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Great work, everyone. Six-month process, thank you. And we don't have to meet before town meeting now. Moving on to old business, FY25, school year, 25-26, school year calendar for final vote, final lead. Would like to introduce that. Dr. Goff?
Yes, if you remember, we put this off until after contract negotiations. We looked at this as a first reading. So you can see obviously start date and end date. We knew those were pretty much going to stay the same. I think the one area that school committee needs, we would like to vote on, for you to vote on, is the December 23rd. In the contract, it was that December 23rd would be a no-school day, except if it fell on a Tuesday. And then, you know, it would be a discussion, a decision whether that day would be an early release day or not. So I think that that was the piece that was up for discussion and was mentioned, agreed upon in contract negotiations.
So we have it on Tuesday this year?
So it falls on a Tuesday.
Mrs. Gallivan?
Yeah, I would say in the spirit of the conversation that we had with the collective bargaining team, I'd like to propose that we do make the 23rd be a half-day. We didn't want to give the day off because it didn't make sense to then have kids come and teachers come for Monday only of that week. So we want to get two days in, but especially for people that have to travel, being able to be out by the middle of the, by the middle of the day might be helpful.
Any other questions, comments, or revisions outside of the 23rd of December to the school year calendar? Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve the FY25-26 school year calendar with the note that the 23rd of December will be a half-day. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Ms. Syrek. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Can I just make a request that we, in our summary, put this, highlight this at the top? I know families have been asking and waiting, and I think making it easy for people to find and letting them know that it's been finalized will be helpful.
Yes. And then also maybe once we make this change, we can send it to the principals too, who could include it in their e-notes as well. And then I'll put in my notes next week.
Excellent. All right, moving on, middle school building project. Here we are at the middle school with the green.
So anybody that's curious as to what's going on now, they're doing fencing, parking, walkways, backstops, batting cages, et cetera. That should be done before the summer's out and that'll wrap it up.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? This looks great. Moving on to the high school.
On the website, the construction and reno phases and dates were added, so thank you to Dr. Han, Kathy Mortali, and Tom Reeve for putting that in. And you can see as you go by, more of the field house has been done. Coming along.
Excellent. Moving on, subcommittee?
Can I just ask some? I was just thinking about graduation and parking and making sure that the area is cleaned up as much as we can. Yeah, we brought it up at the PBC, at the, not PBC, at PBC meeting, and then also at the OAC meetings about graduation. And so we'll continue to do that. And maybe after town meeting, my thought is to just connect with either Jim or Patrick, council and agency, if we can, if we need to, if there's some lack of space with parking spaces, is there a possibility to do a shuttle? I was going to say, that might make the most sense, even for people like us who want to attend, you know, or teachers. Or just get some of the cars somewhere else. We can get them in that lot and then maybe try to use some of the bands.
It's already been claimed.
Or Kerry's driving, yes.
It's already been claimed.
All right. Anything further on high school? Seeing none, moving on, subcommittee activity. Who met since last we met? Anyone?
Special education. Do you mention special? Special education. Where that means.
Okay, moving on. Citizens' comments. Seeing no citizens, moving on to approval of warrants, budget transfers, donations, and minutes. Someone like to take the warrants?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the payroll warrant, number 2541, PS, for the amount listed in your pocket.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Syrek, second by Mrs. Donizio. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following accounts payable warrants for schools' food service, special ed, and student activity warrant, 225041, for school food service, special ed, and Walpole Middle School Project, warrant number 225042, and for school special ed and student activity warrant number 225043, for the amount listed in your pocket.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Syrek, second by Mrs. Donizio. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Someone take the gift and donation approval?
I would like to make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations to Boydens School from Bay State Textiles, $155.70, to Old Post Road School from Bay State Textiles, $128.40, and to Walpole Middle School from Bay State Textiles, $52.80.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Donizio, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Chair, I entertain the motion to approve the April 10th, 2025, school committee meeting minutes and the April 14th, 2025, special education subcommittee meeting minutes. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Mrs. Gallivan. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Breen, second by Mrs. Donizio. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. See you here Monday night for town meeting.